Everybody here is here, except for Bruce, Randy, and Cheryl. Randy's the only one that we know of that isn't going to be participating tonight at the board meeting. So hopefully that they will be joining us shortly. So additions to the agenda, if you look on the additions, we do have one underneath the consent agenda, or not consent, is it?
Yes, excuse me.
Okay.
There are two additions. One of them is under the consent agenda, that is, the interim high school principal is going to offering that contract to Bob Hewitt. And then the other one is adding item J, and that's the world's best workforce report that we need to review, go over those goals, and then get that submitted.
That's why there's one reading, because it said something different when I went in. So, but that is the agenda, so I'd like to turn a motion for that.
Motion to approve the agenda additions.
Second. So I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carried. Anybody here for public comment? Don't see anybody? Nope, nobody's here. What the heck? Consent agenda, so we have, under the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the November 13th and 26th, special and community facility meeting. Personnel, we don't have anything on that, but we do have some donations from Paul Bugbee and Lewis Industries, and then we have the consent agenda for the principal. So, Matt, do you have any comments on any of those?
The minutes are pretty straightforward as far as the donations. Mr. Bugbee's donation is for students to go down to the Orpheum. I forget, I should know the show that they're watching or taking in, but it's escaping me at all cost for that. So that is happening there. Lewis Industries donation, that is actually going to be money that's going to go into the account that we are using for our Makerspace. And that's a dollar amount that was from some pallets that they have taken off our hands, they're agreeing to pay us five bucks a pallet. And so you will see the Lewis Industries donation repeatedly. This is something that we have pallets ready, they will give us five bucks a piece, and I've just got to go over there and keep that money dedicated for the Makerspace, and so it'll keep the expenses.
Okay. All right.
The interim high school principal, it's the recommendation to offer that contract on the addition to Mr. Bob Hewitt. Essentially what that contract would detail is it would put a maximum of 78 days of work. What that would contain would be, for sure, three days a week, between some scheduling things that Bob has going on, and some other things, I think realistically it might approach closer to four days a week. So what that does mean is there will be some time that I will still be doing some coverage over at the high school. And my goal, at least, and my hope is, as much as we can, to get Mr. Orline kind of back to a normal, regular schedule at the elementary school, I think that would be priority one. But the 78 days would give us roughly that, between three and four days a week is where we would be at. There is no leave provision in that contract, so basically what it is, is a day's worked is what triggers compensation. If there are things that come up that Mr. Hewitt is unavailable for and stuff, and he has communicated some things on his schedule, it's just simply he's not working those days, and so we have to compensate for it. The contract is set up, so it's a maximum number of days. That doesn't mean that he has to hit his maximum number of days, and in fact, if we mutually agree, we may agree to have fewer days of work. The goal with this interim contract, and I think Bob and I are on the same page with this, is that it is interim in every sense of the word, meaning that we are looking for a principal to get us to roughly about June 10. Come February, the board will be looking at posting for a permanent principal shift in some capacity, and what that exactly is, I don't think anyone can say right now, but the board will analyze our administrative structure and make that decision, and then at the end of the 18, 19 school year, we would then be looking at hiring someone in their permanent capacity and some board to look at hiring an administrative structure. Questions at all on the interim principal contract?
From my background, there are different types of intervals. One is, we're simply fill the void until we get to point B. Secondly, there is some work to be done by this interim. Try to bring healing, or try to, how do you proceed?
Well, I think all of you know Bob as well, if not better than I. I don't think Bob would be coming here if his job was to get us to June 10. There are specific things that are priorities and important for him to accomplish. And I'll be honest with you, in my conversations with him, I just can't see him taking a position that's just, okay, I gotta fill the void here until June 10. So the conversations he and I have had, I think both of us are very much on the same page. I think our thought process as far as where we're at right now and where the district is going is very much in line. And so my expectation is, is Bob's going to come in here, and it's full speed ahead. We aren't taking five and a half or six months off because we have an interim in place. There's things that have to be accomplished, and we need to get moving. Let's go. Okay?
You have any other questions, concerns? Okay, so since that's all underneath the consent agenda, we'll make one big motion for everything that's underneath that.
Motion to approve everything under consent agenda.
So I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. We'll move on to number seven, communications. Superintendent Matt Forward.
I have just a couple of items. First of all, I just want to update the board. I had probably the most exciting conversation with St. Cloud State University today. Chuck Henches was out, and for those of you that don't know what Chuck does at St. Cloud State, he's very much involved in their career tech development and teacher development side. So he was out, and I am absolutely pumped at what kind of partnership we could establish that would bring professional development opportunities to teachers at a virtual no cost. It could also give teachers an opportunity to get some graduate credits that they could potentially, whether they apply to a salary schedule or CDU's, but then also the equipment that we would be able to use, that is St. Cloud State equipment that they have on a traveling basis. It is, I think the possibilities are absolutely endless. I did talk, this was back early November, we did have our CT advisory meeting, and that group, we did talk a little bit about this partnership with St. Cloud State. At that time, I had kind of given them an estimate of a membership into this program as about $7,000 investment, and I think there's some interest from that CT advisory group to be able to bring some resources to the table. So it was extremely exciting as far as what he has available. The next step here is, he's going to send me a list of their PD offerings that are going to happen this summer, and I'm going to get in a group of teachers together and I want to visit with them about some possibilities of what this could bring. But the way they have it set up, I mean, I really hope, and you know, he's right now kind of going around trying to get districts to help participate, and I think, you know, if we could get a PD opportunity where one of our teachers participates, and there's eight, nine, 10 other teachers, they're going to leave there with 10 times what they produce and stuff that they could lock right into their classroom and use and apply. So I think the possibilities are great. You'll see more of that coming. He was also going to send me a potential contractor agreement in order to buy into the program and stuff, so you'll see that here coming. If not at the 18th, it would be a January item. This week, I also did happen to get some communication from the Paintsville Area Community Foundation about potentially looking at trying to make next year's gala in an effort to continue to build the endowment and reach the endowment goal. Sounds like there is a foundation board meeting coming up later this month, and that was one of the pieces of information that the foundation board was going to wrestle with as far as what exactly is going to be the 2019 goal and kind of mission, what are they looking to raise funds for and stuff. Of course, that's wonderful news, even to be considered is wonderful news, but I told the people that contacted me that absolutely, if that's something they're interested in, I think that direction, that mission, what they're looking to accomplish aligns very closely with what we're trying to do and what you guys are going to see here in a little bit with the Makerspace. So that's kind of right in line, and I told them the school will be an absolutely willing and able partner, let us know what help they need from us. And then lastly, I just want to update the board. I know we've talked about this a lot, and you may be sick of hearing about it, CNA program. We had capacity for 15 students. We, as of end of last week, our registration numbers are at 18 students.
Excellent.
So now that's amongst the three school districts, and so I had the pleasure of calling Ridgewater to see if we could up the capacity from 15 to 18. So my next phone call is to Centure Care Paintsville to see if they have another bed, so we can get six beds in our space rather than five, and as long as we have six stations for them to work with, Ridgewater said absolutely we can go for 18. So I think that's awesome news, that we're going to open up, it's going to be filled to capacity, and this will be the first cohort that's going to start in January, and we'll see what goes from there. The next thing is, I have Garrick and Matt, who are going to take you guys over to the Makerspace and kind of give you Makerspace 101.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so I used most of my time there, and so, but I, it's our last meeting, we do have to go share for my real job.
Do you even get time to do your?
Yeah, good thing I've got good staff. So, yeah, so this will be the most recent brochure, our winter book that I'm sure you all got at home, but I won't bore you with going through it, but that's kind of our, moving into our next one, and now we're already planning for spring, so. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Buildings and ground supervisor.
I've got a whole lot, this Horizon Roofing is finished, repairing our roofs over the auditorium and the fitness center, all the bridging that was pulled up, roofing, or, anyway, that is now tightened up against walls. We're still in need of custodians, but we've had an ad in the paper for a long time, and I just thought, well, I'll just bring it up if anybody knows of anybody out there looking for some work. Yeah. And we had, oh, on the west, on the east side of the elementary school, we are going to pull out most of the drinking fountains on that end, and we've had, they're old, they don't get used, everybody's using bottoms nowadays, so the teachers are fine with pulling the drinking fountains out of the room, and we will take care of that during business period for now, so. Other than that.
On the custodians, are you looking for full-time or part-time?
Full-time, we've got Rhonda Larsen, she's going to retire, and Dan Lizzie Zinberg, and right now we have Castle Christian out on maternity leave, and we just can't find any subs here.
Sometimes I think about retired people, that retire amount a little something to do if you had part-time positions, and a lot of those people are really handy, and I don't know how you could work it out, but especially for an interim.
I think at this point, if we had an applicant, we would try to move forward, we could entertain any possibility.
Okay.
If you know anyone who's interested, by all means, contact.
If the ads is full-time, those people won't come, that's why I asked.
I don't necessarily know that the ad says, does the ad say?
I think it says.
Does it say? If it says full-time or part-time, maybe you could get some applicants and maybe end up with a couple of people that aren't working a lot of hours, but lots of that group is really handy.
I did put it out in the school bulletin this week, just for students, now, $3 a day. I mean, we could have sleeping hallways, entryways, you know, they wouldn't have to be in the classroom, just somebody help out.
That's a good idea.
We're trying.
Okay. Thanks, Donnie.
Thanks, Donnie. Community reports, policy committee.
This is an agenda item, so we're going to talk about.
Yeah, I looked at it, it's right on the tail.
Yeah, so I don't know that we really need to do anything, that was the only one that was on my calendar between the last meeting and now, but we're going to talk about the policy review as an agenda item.
Okay, so we'll move on to old business, district goals.
And I already touched on this, so this will be quick, that I did put on there the SCSU membership, that is what that SCSU, T&amp;E Express, that's the program, that's what they call it, so that is something that I've added to the learning exploring column. Obviously, it would meet our student, or help assist us in meeting a student achievement goal, it would also help with our technology goal. We're going to learn more. Actually, I have a meeting later this week with Paintsville and London Spicer, about this whole SCSU program, and actually how maybe the three districts could leverage joint resources to possibly bring a component of that for the three districts as well. So there's more to come, and we'll talk more about it at our CT advisory group as well on schedule by the end of January.
Thanks, Matt. Moving on to new business, number A, truth and taxation, and I think we have Steve Humper here from PMA. Welcome, Steve, Matt.
Great, yeah. Thanks for your presentation, Steve. Oh, no, actually, it was really fun, nice job on your presentation, although, you know, you're not supposed to file kids or dogs in presentations, I think we could say Makerspace too. We are, but we'll try. This might be a little dry, but it is actually my first slide here after that title. We'll be into requirement for all school districts across the state of Minnesota to hold a truth and taxation here. You have to hold it by, from the end of November through the end of December, so most districts do it as part of board meetings, like you are here today. So the requirements by statute are, we have to talk about the current school year's budget, so that's your fiscal year 18, or your 2018, 19 school year budget. We have to talk about the tax levy that you're going to take action on tonight, and we also, or you, actually, the school board has to allow the public to provide comment before you actually take action on certifying the levy. Okay, so that's what we're going to do today. The levy calendar, just to kind of let you know, it's a lot of work by the staff, and the school district provide all this information to the state, and it's an ongoing process throughout the year. So in June, they're filling in a lot of reports that go to the State Department of Education. In August, you are notifying the county, actually, you set this out for me, what date and time you're going to actually have this meeting, so you did that back and I, and that goes on every proposed tax notice. So when they receive those in November, it says, if you want to come to a hearing, it's going to be on December 4th at 6:00 here at the district. In September, the board already took action on certifying preliminary levy, so based on preliminary numbers, that's the information that goes on that preliminary tax statement that was mailed. November, the county then mails all those notices, so all of you and everybody else who lives in the district should receive that, and then here today in December, you certify the actual levy. So we talk about the current school year budget, all districts in the state of Minnesota have to follow certain guidelines on how they report their information to the state, and part of that purpose is so that you can compare them, Paintsville to Bloomington, or to Cloquet, or any other district in the state. People are supposedly, supposed to be, are following guidelines right, coding all of their expenses to the correct codes and the revenues to the correct codes, et cetera. And it's called fund accounting. So in the district of Paintsville, you actually have five different funds, the general fund, the food service fund, the community service fund, your building construction fund, and then your debt service fund. Each one of those have certain guidelines, and you're required to keep things specific according to those funds. We're going to be focusing on three specific funds tonight, the general fund, the community service fund, and the debt service fund, because those are the three funds that actually have a tax levy component to them. The food service fund and the building construction fund does not. So we look at the budget summary, and this will be the budget that was approved by June 30th by the school board. Again, we look at those five different funds, and you can see the total revenues that were approved in each fund, and the total expenses that were approved in each fund. The only one that seems a little bit out of whack between the revenue expenses is called the construction fund, and those dollars are very specific. You sold bonds at some point in your district's history to construct or build certain projects here in the district. The year that you actually received all of revenue from the bonds is the year that all of the revenue was coded, and then as you are actually doing your construction, that can take over several different years. So the $6,000 that's actually in that revenue problem would be just interest earnings, because you're not receiving any more bond money, but just interest while you sell bond going expenses. So that's why, that's kind of out of the whack if you look at the totals. But if you look at individual, my, as you can see this, and the board should be aware because you approved this budget, your general fund, which is a majority of revenues and expenditures, you're almost in balance. You have a slight deficit budget, but that's because you have a fund balance that can absorb that, you know, little deficit. Your food service fund, again, a slight surplus, your community service fund, slight slight surplus, and then your debt service fund, you're actually getting more revenue than you have expenses for right now. We'll see how that kind of plays out in the future. So when you look at your revenues by funds, just, this is just kind of graph representation of that table, it was on that last page, 83% of all of the district funds, the revenue is going into your general fund. And your general fund really is what most people think of as when you're operating a school, that's your teachers, it's the salaries for everybody in your district, your custodians, your transportation, everything that goes, your utilities, your buildings, et cetera, everything that goes into operating schools is pretty much in your general fund. The community service fund, again, from very specific state statutes of what's happening that, whether it's ECFE programs, early childhood programs, all the way through adult ed's again. Your debt service fund, very specific, again, when you sell bonds, the revenue comes in for that, when you pay, when you have to pay your bonds off, you're taxing your local taxpayers for those dollars amount, and then you'll see the expenditures on that side as well. The last piece I think I neglected to talk about was food service, which is fairly sub-explanatory, your breakfast and lunch programs for your kids and/or adults. If we look at where does all that money come from, this one's actually a little more important as we talk about the tax levy tonight. So of all the money that you receive from your school district, 70% of it actually is coming from, through the state. So, you know, the state gets their money through sales tax and property tax, so we all are kind of contributing to that category. But then locally here for the Paintsville school district, your property tax orders are paying 18% of all the revenue that comes into your budget, so just kind of keep that in mind. The majority of the money that is running your school district is not from the local taxpayers, but they represent 18% of that. The other categories are 4% from the federal government, and that other category has to do with everything else, which would include your football game receipts, your lunch receipts, your community ed revenue, et cetera, that makes up that other category. Then we flip over to the expenditures, you're going to see that this very much mirrors the revenues, because your budgets are pretty much balanced. So while you have 81% of your revenue coming in the general fund, you have 81% being spent as well, and that just follows pretty much the same for all the other funds as well. This slide can be interesting. This is, again, based on how the state requires all school districts to code their expenditures, this is where all your money is being spent. So we have 36% of regular ed, and we have 1% for vocational ed, because the state requires us to break out expenditures that go into vocational ed projects. I'm not sure why they do that, because it's the same if you have your English class or math class, but they require us to break it out for vocational, special ed as well. So if we kind of add those three pies, or those parts of the pie up, that equals 52%. So 52% of all your expenditures are going directly into the classroom. Now, there's some other support parts that go into the classroom as well, another 4% here, instructional support, another 1%, pupil support services usually is really represented by transportation, but again, most of your cost is going into the classroom. A lot of this, people want to focus on, you know, what's happening in administration. In your district, it's a very, very consistent being about 5% of your budget goes towards administration, so certainly not very top-heavy at all. So that's kind of the first section after the requirement, was talk about the budget, so we just did that. Now we're going to talk about the levy that you are going to take action on for taxes payable in 2019. Again, we're broken into three different categories, the general fund, the community service fund, and then the debt service fund. So this first slide, which is really hard to read based on this font on this slide, and you can on your, you know, it's also on your district website, shows you every single category within the general fund that has a levy component, and if we look at what you levied last year compared to this year, or you're proposing to this year, it's an increase of $90,000 or 6.6%. And we're going to highlight some of the big changes on that on another slide. If we go to the community service fund.
Can I add just one thing about that?
No problem.
The proposed levy does need to have an $86,000 correction, because we do not levy the QCOM component, and so that 1.466 million actually wins the correction. We have to do that manually, we can't get the state to run that on the levy report, but we have to manually eliminate that. What you're going to see on what you're going to be asked to certify, to certify, has that eliminated. Okay, but that QCOM piece is in that 1.466. Okay? Sorry.
No, that's okay, I just had to double check to make sure, it is not, I don't think it is.
Okay.
It's the 86, the 1.466 is already as 86 are there.
It does?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
I'm all positive, because we add these three numbers up together to get to the net number that we had to say. We'll stop right at the very end, but I think it's already out of the 1.466.
All right.
Okay, all right, so we go to the next slide. Now we look at the community service fund, and there's hardly any change here at all. You're only certifying the exact same amount as last year, a difference of $300 is the only difference there. And then the debt service fund, which again, is just making your promised debt service payments on the bonds, you actually have a slight decrease of $16,000 or just under 2%, so a little bit less than what your payments are going to be on your bonds this next year. So we go to the total amount that you're planning to certify, yeah, so that's why I want to make sure, this is the number, this is the net number that you are going to certify. Yep, and so the number is $2,398,520. Last year, you certified $2,323,738, so it's an increase of $74,782 or 3.22%. Okay, so we're going to stop there for a second, and we'll see, well, how does that play out, we'll look at some of the major changes, and what does that really mean for taxpayers? Okay? So here are the major changes. You are actually, you're going to ask for more money, you're certifying a levy that's going to have almost $17,000 more in local optional revenue, almost $8,500 more in retrorenal revenue. Your capital project retrorenal is going to, your tax levy is $10,000 higher, equity revenue $15,000 higher, your operating capital $10,000 higher, and LTFM stands for long-term facility maintenance, that's going to be roughly $4,300 higher, so that equals 66% of that, or sorry, 66,000 of that increase. So the majority of the increase is documented in there. And then if we go to the next slide, we'll see that the majority of all of that funding that I just listed on the back page, your main driver of how much money you're going to get for the district is based on the number of kids you have. There are some other components as well, but by far, the major driver is how many kids. Well, pay 19s, the taxes you're going to levy next year compared to the taxes you levied this past year, the kids, the estimated number of kids is only an increase by two, so why would there be that much change in revenue that you're asking from your local taxpayers? To me, that would not sound intuitive, right? If you only have an increase of two kids, you should, you know, the revenue should be pretty much the same. Well, here's, here's the reason, and that's on the next slide. Because of the way the state tries to balance things out between district to district, which kind of how they're, the state trying to be equitable, they say, okay, the amount that we're going to pay as a state compares to the amount that you as local taxpayers have to pay is going to be based on the wealth of the district. And if your market value increases, like it has in Paintsville, it went up by $20 million in total, so all the market value in the entire district, if you add them all up, together, each specific piece of parcels, that's increased by $20 million, and your net tax capacity increased by $600,000, which means, again, the ability for you to tax. If you do that, they're going to say, you as local taxpayers, you have to pay a bigger share than what you paid last year. Okay, your value went up in property, so we're not going to pay as much as the state, you're going to pay a little bigger share. So that's why you're, that's really why you're having an increase next year. And if we go to the next slide...
I have a question about that market value.
Yes.
Is that something that's manipulated, or is it real?
Well, it's real. It's given, it's done by the...
Is it manipulated by the state and county?
No, it's, I mean, it's a factual number, of course, that's done by the, your county assessor. And the only way that you could say it's manipulated, or the state even tries to take it further, and they didn't put this into my slide, but to try to make it more equitable, is they asked, the state says, okay, in your county, or counties, your assessors assess all the piece of property, and on average, your assessor is assessing it at 95% of the value, okay? And your neighboring district, their county assessor is assessing it at 98% of the value, they take that and actually come up with a new note and try to make that equitable. So they try to make that as fair as possible as well.
Sterns County Assessor did share some information too, that they have Sterns County divided up into 10 quadrants or wards, so to speak, and each year they tried to analyze one to see if there needs to be any adjustments, and I know that this year, it was the Richmond-Painesville area that was part of them, that was being analyzed. And so whether that means they do some things with assessed value or not, I don't know. But each, and that's just Sterns County, and obviously we have some portions of our districts in County High as well, so I don't know how that plays out, but I know that that's one of the things that was going on with Sterns County this year.
But what I've heard, I've had people say that the taxes are all going up, and the thing they're relating it to is market value. So the market value took this hike.
Right.
Now everybody's taxes have gone...
My house's market value went up dramatically.
Yeah, that's what I tell them, and I'm just curious where that comes from.
It's funny, because I usually have these conversations, and I didn't pay enough attention, I should have tonight. Usually I can see people nodding their heads in the marketplace, saying, yeah, I saw my own property, you know, I wanted to. So if your district went up as large as it did, more than likely, your home values went up, or your business values went up as well.
Yeah, because there was a trend that one time in our value...
Oh, it went up for a long time, and then now we're starting to, and now we're starting to see an increase, so, yes.
So as part of our reality, as you have, when you, you can see, the ratios then, in pay 18s of this past, you're currently paying taxes on, for instance, I'll just do this top line, the local optional revenue and FBA revenue, you were paying, or the local taxpayers were paying 84% of that amount of money, this next year you'll be paying 88%. So it doesn't even mean that because you're collecting more tax money, you're getting more revenue, you're going to, because you have two more kids, I mean, you'll get incidental more revenue, but the local people literally is going to pay more of that revenue. So that's why your tax levy is going up. Okay, so we go down, so now we see that the total levy increased by 3.22%. However, since the reference market value went by just over 8%, and the adjusted net capacity went up by 6.33%, the effect will be that if you owned a $100,000 home last year, now here's the big if, and if it still is valued at $100,000, now in many cases it won't be, because it got, you know, reassessed, but if it did, they actually, you would actually see a decrease, you know, a whopping $6.88, but you know, 2.37 decrease. So property values stay consistent from year to year, and for this year, for Painesville, you're going to actually see a decrease. More than likely, because all your, the market values are going up, most people's market values went up, you know, somewhat as well. So then you could see, you know, an increase as well with that. I'm going to start here. So the other factors that could affect on your tax statement, and actually you just hit it on the head here, you stole my thunder on this first little point, if your market value goes up on your home, your taxes are going to, you know, correspond and go up as well. And then the other piece, I always want to make sure, in case there's any audience members that come, and I don't think there are any tonight, that are really looking at their property tax statements, sometimes they're confused because they're looking at their total tax, and we're here tonight just talking about the school district portion tax, you also have your county tax on there, you have your city tax on there, and in some cases you might have a special taxing district even, and we are just talking about the increase or decrease that was going to happen on the school district, part of your taxes. The other piece that we are not here, the school board is not here to talk about, are individual tax assessments, you know, what people's parcels or tax, that happens at the county level. This is just a piece of reference, and again, this, I know this is on your district website, so if people are looking for some tax relief, the state does have some, you know, property tax relief forms for those who are eligible, and they can be found at this website, if you go there, they can look for some relief there. So then the board action tonight, after the public comment, is to certify an exact amount of $2,398,518.72. And as Matt said before, you actually could certify roughly $6,000 higher than that amount for your alternative compensation overtaken, already gave that number out there, so this is the number that you do want to certify. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lou Chair for public comments. Okay.
Is there anybody here for public comments? All right, so there isn't anybody with a public comment, so everyone just move on to the table, 2019 levy certification, which Steve had just showed us, that is what we are going to be certifying tonight. So if anybody has any questions, now would be the time to ask Steve while he's here.
So this is what you were talking about, Matt. Matt, or was the maximum levy, if I look at that total, less than $86,000 comes up to a...
So what you have is, basically, MDE provides these 40-page levy runs, is what they do, and page 31 is what gives you your summary. The QCOM local levy portion is a manual process for them to remove down at MDE. So no matter what run we get, it's built on the fact that you do the state aid combined with the local levy, and so that's why we have added in here, yes, our local levy is not going to be the 2.44 number, you would subtract out the $86,057.72. So the total dollar amount is exactly as Steve had in slide 22, $2,398,518.72. We do need a motion to move on.
A motion to approve the payable 2019 levy. So I'm low. Thank you, Bruce.
I got a motion from Bruce, and a second from Lou. Any other further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signified by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry.
Thank you, Steve. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You too. Have a safe trip back to the big city. All right, we'll move on to C, policy review, first reading.
Do you have your ticket?
Yep.
So Policy Committee met on November 14th. The summary document is the link that is on C, I think that's the easiest thing to use. Of course, if you want to go through each of those policies, but the attachment or the link that is there is what the policies will look like with the changes. So 401 is equal employment opportunity, and it is, in my estimation, they're changing some definitions. It is a required change as the definitions are changing with the Minnesota Human Rights Act modification, so this policy then would just align to that piece of state legislation. Policy 402, disability nondiscrimination policy, we would remove these existing contacts for Title IX and human resource officer, as those portions were eliminated from the policy, the newest policy that's out there, and in its place, we would replace that with the person who is responsible for most of our HR processes over here, so we put Linda in as the contact or the point of contact for any of that. This doesn't in any way signify that it is her responsibility to resolve anything that is brought to her attention, but this is just directing people that this is your point of entry if there's a concern. And then lastly, we remove the last sentence in the general statement of policy, just saying that the person that we are identifying as the ADA or Title IX coordinator, that is not happening when we are designating Linda. Policy 403, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees, the only change to this is just aligning the policy language and discipline to master agreements, and so there is just a reference in there as far as the district's recognizing progressive discipline, and our policy then aligns with what our master agreements that are in place for all of our labor groups. Policy 404, employee background checks, just to clean up, a couple of things on here is paragraph C used to refer to the old State Board of Teaching, and now it's the Minnesota Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, PLSB, that's the new licensing body in the state, so it's a that reference. And then paragraph D, basically what paragraph D did in the old policy is it provided the district with exclusions as to when they did have to provide a background check, and what our stance is, if we are hiring an employee, we will conduct a background check on them. And I just want it to be universal across all classifications, that when we hire someone, we need a background check done. We aren't going to rely on another agency to do a background check. Something goes wrong, the first question we're going to get is, did you do a background check? I don't want to say no, I relied on the state licensing board to do that for us. I want to say yes, and here's what we got for results. Okay? And then policy 406 is the public and private personnel data. There were two paragraphs that had, again, references to the State Board of Teaching, and that now has to be updated to that PLSB board as well. Those are the changes, most of them I would classify as technical changes and then simple clarifications. I would consider this the first reading of these policies. We approve this first reading, these policies then will be posted in the district office if anybody wants to review them, they certainly would have that opportunity. We would bring them back at the next board meeting for the board to formally adopt and approve. Once the board adopts and approves, then they go on to map to be put on our website, the old policy would be wiped out, and the newer one will be replaced.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this reading.
Sure.
So I got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hear none, all in favor, signified by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, we'll move on to D, combining fully in place.
So you saw this once, and we did approve this once, I would like to amend it. We just have to have this in place by December 31st, by the end of the year. This will be in place then for the next year. In talking more with the city and some more conversation about potentially looking at doing a school district election in May, the question about election judges came up, and the modification to this would be rather than having the polls open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we would have the polls open from noon until 8:00 PM in order to accommodate a special election, is essentially what is going on. The school district would not be up for any other elections unless there would be something happening with the facility project in the spring. And so that's the modification to this, is it's just addressing the time in which the polls will be open, and again, rather than going from 7:00 to 8:00, it would be from noon to 8:00. It is a resolution, so we will replay our roll call.
I agree as well.
Questions?
I'm going to motion we adopt the resolution as printed, can I do that? Or don't we do it?
Yeah, or could the motion just be that we adopt the amended resolution?
Sure.
For the poll times, or the time that the polls are open.
Okay, so I got a motion from Bruce, and a second from Lou. Linda?
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
All right, ayes carried. All right, we're going to move on to E, school district website.
This is just information at this point. One of the things that Matt has been working on, besides Maker Space, who, I don't know if it's part of his real job or what, but one of the things that he's been doing is he has been actually working quite diligently on a reboot for our website. This has been a conversation that we've been having as far as the administrative team for a couple of months now. Matt's done quite a bit of light work with a variety of vendors. I will tell you, it is a huge spectrum of what is out there and what they cost. You can do some things for, you know, as much as probably a couple hundred dollars a year, and then you're taking on all the design components and all of that, up to, if you want, all the bells and whistles, and talk to all these social media widgets and video and everything. I mean, there are districts that are spending 12, 13, 15, 20,000 dollars a year on their website. So going into this, really, what we were looking at is, we want something that does have a mobile app, since right now that is how most people are accessing websites. So there are, the difference between being mobile-friendly and actually being situated to run on a mobile app, there's a difference in that, and so we are interested in having a mobile app. And where Matt has kind of gone here is ended up with this educational networks. Give you an example, if you want to go look at a Minnesota school district that's using them, it's Proctor, that would be a district in the state that is using them. Educational Networks is big in the Chicago area and then further east, they are obviously trying to get more into the Minnesota school district. There are some private schools as well, down towards the cities that are using them as well. You can see by the quote, we'd be looking at about $4,200, that would be for the first year, and then they do an interesting deal where you can actually get $600 back. The CEO of the company, if we send him an email and ask him to donate money for some school district activity or something student-led, he will donate to $600 back, and pretty much it sounds like if you're a business partner, or if you're a customer of theirs, you will get $600 of your $4,200 back. As we move forward, next board meeting, we'll have some more information on this. I guess personally, as we look at the website and stuff, it's, I think it's time for a freshening, and there's things that can be cluttered and stuff, and so I think it's a need. This would be a joint partnership as far as how we would build this out, it would be a joint partnership with district funds and community ed funds, is how we would go about it. So questions on the end of website information, and Matt certainly could probably answer them better than I.
What are we spending right now?
We are using a service called DNN, so it's probably $500 a year for the hosting, but we don't have a web app, we're not ADA compliant, and...
And we probably had a startup cost.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it says $4,200 or whatever it was, that's a startup, what is the on-running cost?
That's an annual cost, so...
Oh, it's an annual cost. I want to look at those two sites, this is just what I only picked up, and they were all pretty decent to move around in, you could see, very descriptive, and it's quite nice.
I think one of the things that you need to realize is we've had a couple of comments on Facebook about people thinking of moving to Painesville, wondering about the education. This is going to be one of the first places people look, and if they come here and can't figure out, and they get their questions answered, you know, it's got to be something that will appeal to people. So I think it's part of our promotion.
Absolutely. Analytics on it, Matt?
Yeah, full analytics, yeah, so we know, we know what page is being viewed, what, how often, what, how many unique IP address views, it's all built in. That's what you're paying for, is the service, and it's designed for schools, so teachers can have all their own sites, their pages. It's streamlined. It streamlines, pushes notifications in the app. So it's...
One thing I like about it is that now, like with our Maker Space and everything that we're doing now, we can now probably input that more easily on a webpage like this of figuring out what we're actually doing in some of these places, you know? So that's going to be another thing, you know, for PR, what's actually going on. Parents can go right into different things and say, "These are some new items, new things that are going on with the district." This is all their, you know, it can be, I think it can be really intuitive of how we keep on expanding their own resources for our kids and their learning. I would say there probably even maybe some opportunity for some kids to get some, you know, designing and working with it.
The one thing I would bring up as a negative, just based on what we have now, is that there are some sites on our website that haven't been touched in years. And that's a negative. If somebody goes into that, looks at it, that's a negative, so...
Yeah, that's one of the negatives right now we have, where teachers have their own page, but it's some use Weebly, some use Google Sites, and some haven't touched their page for four years.
Right.
Literally. You could pull up some that, and that's out of our control. So in this system, it would actually, that's what we're paying for, is the overall management. And so everyone is under our brand, under our system. We can shut those pages off or change it. They'll all be a standard template.
More likely, probably easier for the staff to change it, too.
Yeah, and it, there has to be some accountability, too, that hasn't been probably on a lot of that, follow-through on expectations, so, and that's all in this discussion, too.
I was looking at a bunch of schools from those mod lists. Some schools have them, you can't even move around in them. So I looked up all three of these, and went in there. You can move in them, they're easy to get around in. Somebody like myself, I don't spend a lot of time here. I want to find my stuff as quick and fast as possible. I don't think I'm probably any different than anybody else is. All three of those that are on that page, you can manipulate very well. But I went through Minnesota with a lot of these different schools. Some of them you got to get in, and it's hopeless. You can't even move around any of the kind of things. Some were way worse than what we already have already. Not to say that ours is...
That was one of the questions that I posed to this group, too. I just said, you know, we're having conversations about a potential facility project in the spring. If that were to be something that actually goes forward and is moving, how do we construct a bond referendum site? And they were very quick to say, "That's something you would call us, and we would get out there and we would figure out exactly what it needs to be to prominently be displayed." So that would be a first order of business when people were to understand. So that was the other thing to me that I think was good, reassuring to hear, is that, yes, they are very committed to coming out. I think if you go to Proctor's site, one of the things that Educational Networks is really kind of the marquee of their site, is they actually send a team out to do some videography of your district and of your buildings and grounds and all of those things to highlight it. And any of the districts that they're currently working with, you can see that there's, that's a full product of the product.
So would we have an onsite administrator?
Yeah, it'd be the same one we have right now.
So really what you're paying for here is, I mean, there's still a lot of work. They're giving you a better container and a management system, but they aren't doing all the work of managing it and putting all the data in and doing all that. But they're putting it where it's, they're professional designers and they specialize in schools, so that's...
They can help you, they give you a resource.
Exactly. They're going to set it up right, and they know what works well, what's visually pleasing, and...
That answers my question. Thank you.
Been a few years since I looked at this stuff, but when I saw the price, I was actually kind of surprised, because what we used to deal with when I was involved in manufacturing and stuff, were 20,000, $25,000 sites to start, and then they went up from there. They were astronomical.
And they're all over the place. I mean, you can, you can spend, you can spend as much as you want to spend, you really can.
So why are we getting this one? Is this one that you think is a really good one out there, the two of you?
Yeah, we sat in multiple ones. We were high on one that had a lot of integration with school, school information systems, and there was a lot of bells and whistles for big districts, but that would have been a 13, 5 every year ongoing cost. And there's a trade-off of, we really wanted an app, but we don't need necessarily every, you know, we valued it, and we think this is the best value of one out there. They really want to get to this area of the country. They have great references, and they're all over on the East Coast, and it's a very fair price, and they have a good reputation, so...
So if we take the 600, we don't have that now. That would have been a new cost anyway for the mobile app, 4,200 less potentially the 600, if we worked that in.
It's really $3,600, as you know. So, you know, and I would echo what Matt's saying is, yes, you can go and spend 12,000, 13,000, $15,000 for a district our size on a website. And there are some neat things that they can do and stuff. I guess when you take the cost plus what it is that that final product is, I think what Educational Networks is going to provide us is going to be something that we can absolutely use and leverage, and I think it's reasonable price. I don't necessarily know that we have to, you know, be spending upwards of $15,000 a year on our website.
So when are we going to decide on this?
December 18th.
December 18th?
Yep. And Educational Networks is aware you guys are meeting tonight. They're aware that you are reviewing this. They're aware that typically you will review something at your first meeting and act on it at the second meeting. So realistically, I think Matt's already informed them that December 19th is our hope that we will be contacting them, and they're going to be setting up public and start working with us to get it going.
So the Minnesota site is a Proctor school?
Proctor School would be a district in Minnesota. Yep.
Okay. Move on to F, First Meeting in January.
So, and again, this is, I'm new, so I'm asking if this is something that the board thinks would be valuable. My understanding, in looking back on the archives, is that typically you just have your first meeting in January at your regular meeting, and you do the organizational pieces there and stuff. I would recommend that the board actually schedule that first Monday that's available in January, just simply to do organizational items. So we would elect officers. We need to do a couple of things with business as far as board member salary, attorney, setting up the meeting schedule, those type of things. And then we would also establish the Board 2019 Committees. That would be the extent of that organizational meeting in January. Where I came from, we went to this model. It seemed to work very well. It was a very easy way to get together to do that, right away at the beginning of January, then everything was going. If something came up, that second week of January before we had our first board meeting, everybody that already had their committee assignments, and I could get a committee together if it was something that we needed to do. So it would be my recommendation that the board have a first meeting in January on that first available Monday, which would be Monday, January 7th. We would meet at 6:00 PM, and it would be in the secondary seminar. The only thing that we would do would be the organizational items. There would be no regular business at that meeting.
I'm making a motion that we have scheduled January 7th as an organizational meeting for the school board.
Does that work with the incoming group?
Well, I'm meeting with them tomorrow. Okay.
I hate to give them a, instead of meeting for somebody that isn't going to be able to be attending that.
Yeah, they're going to make that, that's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Perfect.
It's going to be a priority.
Perfect. All right, just so bad. I hate to make meeting for somebody else. So I got a motion from Bruce?
Second.
And a second from Rick. Any other further discussion?
I have to add that I think it's especially important because we have big changes in the school board.
Well, I think this is the best, I think this is best for this year's go-around, because we do have such a big turnaround. We need to set that, just in case something would happen. That would leave you or with no other resources. Or three, I'm sorry. Three, three. Yeah, you wouldn't even have a four. You could have a four, okay.
So, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign. And carry.
I just have a question. I just came ARK today, too, in the mail. The state meeting is at the 9th, 11th, 16th, 17th.
18, 19.
So was the intention, that would be the Monday, then to go to our regular schedule?
Yeah, and actually, we will set the schedule at that, at that January 7th meeting. Yeah, we'll set that schedule then as well.
Could be Friday afternoon.
Could be? Friday night, 8 o'clock?
Maybe not.
He's leaving the board to look what he wants.
I'm just trying to put out feelers.
That motion's aye.
Okay, G, Superintendent Evaluation.
So you should evaluate me. That would be a good task for this board. Typically, the past experience that I've had is, this is a little goofy, because boards operate on a calendar year, and school districts operate on a fiscal year. And due to the fact that boards turn over on calendar years and stuff, I believe the best practice would be for every December, the board would conduct the superintendent evaluation. I did share with you MSBA's model, and I do think it would be great if we could get to that goal-oriented model. I think for the purpose of this first evaluation, what I would like to do is use the old superintendent evaluation that was a rating sheet that we could have board members complete, and then from that information that the board members completed, we'd collect that, we could then take and identify what I would hope would be two or three, absolutely no more than four, goals that would be the superintendent's goals for the next 12 months. And then as we move forward, and if I'm here next December for an evaluation, then that process would be, rather than relying on that rating sheet, we would then be working off of that goal document. And then it would be a conversation about, or the evaluation would really be goal-focused, more so than rating someone from 1 to 5 or something. So for this first time around, I would send out the rating form, and then based on the responses on that form, at our December 18th board meeting, we'll have a closed session where you guys review that information, and then we will develop those goals, and you will be able to give me any feedback.
It's at 1:00 PM, isn't it?
Correct. Yep. It'll be the last order of business that we'll do. We'll close the meeting and do the evaluation at the end of that. Okay?
So once we get the, we send it back to you?
Well, okay, so here's the only thing, and I, we can do this however you want. I can talk to you about how we did it in my previous district. Obviously, I was there for 12 years, there was a lot of trust. So I'm comfortable doing it however you guys want to. The way it happened in the past is, I would get the survey prepared, I would run it by the board chair, the board chair would approve it, and then I would go out into Google Form. The members then would go in and go through the Google Form and complete their ratings and hit submit. And then I would get their spreadsheet and tally up the spreadsheet with the summaries and the comments, and then send those on to the board chair. The board chair then brought them to the board meeting, at which we were going to have a closed meeting, and would go through those. It was a conversation at the closed session. Now, I am fine having whatever role you guys are comfortable with. If there's someone on the board who wants to organize it and do it, that's fine with me. If you would prefer that it go out in Google Form, I'm certainly willing to do that. I think we could even enlist Linda's assistance to make sure that Matt is putting all the questions in there. If there's any concern about any of that, I would certainly do whatever level of support or assistance the board would like.
I'm very interested from my end of getting it in a Google report and having a summary of what we all think before we meet with you. Trying to figure it all out at the time we're together, I just always felt that was kind of unprofessional, and I don't think it always accomplished what we really wanted to, but I am totally game on that Google part that you're talking about. So we can take our time and go through it, we submit, a summary comes together of everything that, and when we actually meet, we have something productive to talk about.
Yep. Okay. Yep, are you guys comfortable with me putting the form together and giving it to you? Okay, and then what I will do is, since we're sitting here on the 4th, I will have the tool out to everybody on the 11th. And then if by the end of that week, you could get them all submitted, then Friday before I leave, I would get the summary to Mark, and then Mark can email it to everybody, and you would be able to have the weekend to look at that summary and review.
Perfect. I like that idea.
Okay, and then all we're really going to do, have the actual evaluation, is we're going to have the goal sheet and have the data, and we're going to have a conversation about the data, and then develop two or three, if you guys want four. I guess I'm not going to, I wrestle seven people, but I would prefer two or three goals that would be established for me for 2019. Okay? All right.
Great. Well, we don't want, yeah, we don't want so many goals, and then we won't get to it All right. H, Proposed Facility Project.
Okay, so I did put in Drive, I did put kind of just an outline. One of the things that I think we need to, let me stop this for just one second, and let me get to it here.
This from one of your vacations, do you remember?
I miss. Someone from Google, so...
Google, or something. Okay.
See if I can zoom it up longer down there. Is that better? Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to have a discussion about facility project, and kind of where things are at. And I'm not providing an outline here to script what the discussion is. I just thought having an outline might make the discussion a little more, flow a little better. So essentially, right now, we are sitting at, we've completed three of these facility committee meetings since I have been here, two of them in October, we just had our last one in November. At the last one, they did review the cost estimate, and the group was in pretty much consensus that they needed to get back together again on December 17th. There's a couple pieces of data that everybody's looking for. I think the first and foremost, what they want to see is, yes, they understand kind of what tax impact is for a project of the scope that we're talking about, but they also want to see what debt is coming off of their taxes, so that they can see a net number, and not necessarily just this is what that project will cost. So I've engaged Ellers, and they are, they're actually working on several different comparisons. They're working on that net number. They're also working on some comparables for us and member districts around us that will be able to analyze what operating referendums look like for us and with our neighbors and people in our area. And then they're also preparing a document that will be able to look at bond referendums and taxes being paid on bond approvals, and what that looks like comparing pains to those same comparables that are in our area. So Ellers is working on those three things. Ellen and his firm is working on the, his engineers and stuff are working on the operational cost that potentially would be part of any sort of facility addition or adding more square feet. And I'm going to tell you right now that there are some variables in that operational cost, because I believe, to my core... because I believe, to my core, the number one priority for this district when we go to do a facility project is to replace our boilers. That is number one. And so as we replace our boilers from the 1950s and 1960s to newer, more efficient machines, there are obviously going to be some savings there. So the cost and operational side of things, it's going to be a little, a little more murky than it's just simply it's this black and white number. There's going to be some variability in it. So those are the things that we're working on as far as that December 17th meeting. And from there, we will kind of bring that final data and talk about, you know, what that looks like and see what that feedback is from the group. I've had some questions too about process. And you know, what does the construction process a lot of times look like? There is a, I believe it's a 150-page document that actually was just released by MDE in November. And they have, it's a whole host of information that's in there. That actual full guidebook, I did put in the December drive. And so you can read the entire thing if you would like. But I did provide a condensed version that really talks about what this process looks like and what's up here as far as this outline. This is really kind of what they're talking about. So when they talk about a preliminary planning component, first step, you know, is an assessment of needs. And I think this district has been very diligent about engaging the community and really looking at what are the priorities and what are the needs that are emerging. Then from there, once you have kind of that needs and you have a whole assortment of stakeholder groups that have kind of really had those priorities bubble to the surface, then you have something to start planning around. And I think that's also what this district has done. They've taken the needs, the priorities, and I think we have a pretty comprehensive plan right now that I really think it's hard to look at that plan and say, you know what, that component right there, it's nice to have, but it really isn't part of our needs. I think everything that we've kind of encompassed up to this point, it really is a priority or a need. Now, this is where it gets interesting because a lot of this preliminary planning will culminate with a construction estimate. And that is what a school district will then use as the tool to determine to move forward and have the board decide, yep, this is something that, these are our priorities, our needs. We're going to move forward with this. And this is what we're going to present to the voters. And the project can't exceed this dollar amount. And then it's really talking about, you know, informing the public and getting the word out as to what's being asked for and the why and how it will be used and what the impact will be and what the pros and the cons and all that stuff. And then the community's going to vote. And once there's a successful referendum, then districts will come back and engage in the final planning. And that final planning, a lot of times is, okay, this is exactly what our budget is. Now, we need to go and do all of the crossing of the Ts and dotting of the Is and all the designing. And these are the means in which everything has to fit. And so as you look at that, where this really fits is a lot of times that movement from the preliminary planning to final planning up in item A in 2A, that's really where you would kind of place in a bond referendum. So once that would happen, then there would be some final planning. And then from there, once you have a final plan, then you would actually move into an implementation process where you would get pre-bid documents and you would have that final design phase all taken care of. And then you would move to actually getting contracts in place. You would award bids. And then your work would start. You would have construction praise. Okay? So just so you're, that's kind of the traditional process. Now, there's nothing to say that we have to go every step as in that process. But it's also, it gets somewhat difficult to be able to get to the level of final planning without knowing if this is something that's going to move forward or not. Because for us to actually go from where we're kind of at right now with our construction estimate, with what we have, to this is exactly what all of the components will be and exactly what everything, however they will be placed. Number one, we would have a huge engineering bill to pay for, architecture bill. We would have all of those things that would be a huge issue that we would have to be able to get to that level. So I guess I'm wondering as far as what is the board's thought on process? And what is it that the board needs? And how do we get to a place in the process where the board feels like they would be able to make a decision? Are there pieces that are missing? Are there things, is there data that the board needs? What are the needs in order for that to move forward? I guess is really kind of a first question I'm wondering about.
For me, if you can copy it, for myself at least, that the instruction manual from State.
Yep.
I'd be interested in taking a peek at that. For me, to move forward, we are presented with one option. There have to be more options. So if I concentrate my views on making sure we have space for kids, we're talking about a facility around them. There are lots of different options to build a facility around them. Okay? Which could also have different price impacts. That's where I'd be at. I think, in my estimation, our public has us here to do due diligence, to do the best we can. We are not all living in brick houses. We're living in buildings with steel siding. And I know Evan doesn't appear to like the steel very well. But it's a reality. All of our eggs people have steel buildings covering millions of dollars worth of equipment and operational things that go on inside. Is there truly a price difference in some of that?
And I don't get the impression that Evan is necessarily for or against either one. I think what he really wants to make sure is just that it's not always come down to what is the initial cost. Because you, yes, there are lots of ways to put up an inexpensive place. But we also have to be mindful of what are the long-term costs that are associated. And that's what I hear Evan keep talking about is, yep, I understand, we can put up whatever structure costs the least amount of money today. But over the life expectancy of that structure, is it ultimately really the least expensive structure? And that's what I keep hearing him come back to is, let's really be mindful of if we're going to do this, that it's a community asset, that it's something that is going to have the life expectancy that we want, that it's going to be here for 35, 40, 50 years. And that it's not going to be something that we do at a price point that's attractive today. And all of a sudden, 10 years from now, we're asking the question, gosh, why didn't we just invest that upfront? That's the thing that I keep hearing Evan talk about a lot.
I think that was even talked about at the last facility meeting. About the, you know, about the, of the steel building versus the precast. And, you know, looking at the big picture.
And that's what I guess I'd be interested to know, what is the difference? If you're looking at, because I know Bruce has that question, you know, the steel building versus the precast versus whatever other material that could be out there. Maybe we just need to lay it out there and say that this, if we go with the precast, this is what the building structure would cost, not the actual interior part would be. You know, if this is a steel building, this is what that building would cost. And what is the difference? And then is there any advantages to go to one way? And then there could be a debate on that. But I, like he was saying also, I don't think that there's millions of dollars difference between the two. So if we're looking at a project of, say, $15 million or so, or roughly there, it could be $14 million or $13.50 or something like that. So that is, I guess, where it's going to weigh out, I think, at the end, right?
Yeah, well, I don't have any trouble with that. I think the public's expecting us to really look at this thing. So we all have budgets. I think this community has a budget. We have an operational levy that has to pass five years from now or whenever that show up.
Five-year date, yeah.
It's got to pass. So we have to fit the budget that our population says, yep, you have done the best you can to provide this service for this dollar amount. No different than an individual buying a car, building a house.
But Evan, but here we have to look at the options.
Evan is doing an architectural job. Steel buildings are done by engineers. And when they arrive, they're a kit and they're engineered and ready to put up. Okay? So HVAC and some of that kind of stuff, the state requires that somebody like Evan has to be involved. But we don't have a quote on an actual steel building. And they're easy to get. We can call a steel building company and send them a plan. And sometimes we're going to have to figure out some measurements. But I think it's only behooves us to make sure we have done that. And for the public, if we just come to them with one option, nothing in anybody's personal budget is one option. There are lots of options out there.
And we have had many discussions, many meetings talking about, you know, planning and all of that and what the needs are and where we stand. And, you know, so I think we have to, we can keep going round and round and round and round. So we're moving the base. But I think, I think we have put a lot of time and energy into coming to the point where we're at right now. And I think.
Because we have, we have the space. We know exactly how big the space we want. We know that the gym is going to be this big that we would like to see. We did all the work. We know.
Did I miss something? I never saw the plan that has the measurements on it. There wasn't one plan here that had a measure.
There was measurements on there. Square footage.
There's square footage. Let's do square footage. Yeah, I don't know.
Because at the end of the day, all you have to do is, all I'm saying is everybody will do that. I've been in retail for my life. I've been in lots of other things for my life. Doesn't make any difference. So I have, everybody has a budget. I believe the community has a budget too.
Right.
We as a paintball can't be buying a Lamborghini when we could get away with.
But I don't, but I don't want to buy something that is a Toyota that we could get a Cadillac or something in between. If we're looking at the comparing that. And when you're talking about budgets, what is the budget of the people? What is the budget? You're always saying that we have.
They're going to tell us when it comes up for a vote. And when I look at the bonds out there, half of them did it in the past. And when I read all the newspaper, I have their self gimmick.
But half of them did.
But their self gimmick is all the same. And we've looked into all the needs and everything. We have gotten the capital. We started with the public. So I think we've done really well there.
Yes, and I think we've done way better.
Right at the day, if I was to say it wasn't still building passed it, nobody here can tell me that.
We went right to, no, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't.
Because when the group was in June, we asked for a pricing of what it would be. And we talked about the steel. The price that we got is a steel panel, a concrete panel with insulation in it, with an architectural design roof with the most expensive steel and roof that you can buy. I've been driving around since we got that standing seam estimate for the roof. I haven't seen a single steel building with a roof on it like that. Now, steel buildings are different than pole barns. Got to leave the pole barn mentality. A steel building is a steel building. So down at Industrial Park, where the electric motor service used to be, that's a steel building. Okay? It's different and it's, it's all different. The ice rink is a different steel building. That was sitting there for $125,000 when we built it. They put artificial ice and some of that in there. But when they're away from us and having our kids inside skating, Richmond went over there and built them for a million one. Okay? There is a little bit difference in what that tax impact would be.
Yes, and I think we're doing our due diligence of trying to figure out what is that, that factor amount is. But we can go out and still get that steel building if that's truly what we as a facilities and school want to do is see once what that price of that steel building is. There still has to be furnaging, things that we have to put inside of it.
But I don't worry about what goes inside because we're talking about a shop. We're talking about equipment for the shop. We're talking about Matt's area that's got equipment on the inside. It more or less what we have, we have a lobby where there's going to be a whole lot of stuff in the lobby. There's going to be a bathroom in there and a whole Canadian with nothing on the inside.
I think there's going to be all kinds of stuff on the inside there.
You can't just have an open space.
It's going to be an open space. You have to have a floor. But we don't have walls all over.
You're essentially, you're essentially going to have a netting system that is.
It is a wall system.
Is he, I mean, what right now is specked out for the inside of that building is a complete netting system that follows the inside of that walking track all the way around the inside of that building. And that splits all of those courts into their own individual court. I mean, so essentially, yes, you don't have walls going from floor to ceiling, but you do have a netting system.
You have some infrastructure in there, but it's not like intense. It's not like a kitchen or it's not like a classroom. It's not like this kind of thing where we have pillars all around and all that. This is, this all costs money at one time. We're talking about pretty much an open space with things on the inside. We got to put a floor in. We got to do the rest of that. But it's not infrastructure heavy. But if the board wants to go ahead with it, that's fine. The voters are going to tell us what they think.
And they are. And but again, it's, they'll still think that we had 50, 60, 70 people in here talking to us about what they would like to see as a project and what kind of offerings that we would need, you know, with the CTE classes and stuff like that to be able to boost that up. Part of that stuff is we have to put our building like it is right now to accommodate what we have already on that side of it. If we just go ahead and say, okay, we want to put a steel building on that side now, well, that's a different thing. But still, you still have to heat it. You still have to insulate it. You still have to roof it. You still have to do all this other stuff. And I think he was willing to share with us what is, what is that metal building is going to be and how much, you're still going to have to go to MDE. And you're still going to have to prove to them that this is a good project, that we're not just spending it frivolously on some junk that's going to be, that's not going to hold up in the next 10 years because we have taxpayers that are paying for it. And we have seen other projects that obviously didn't do very good at getting the best products out there. You look at Manawaska, all their whole window systems have to be replaced. And that, that building is so new. And the taxpayers up there are just royally mad at the board being so cheap about not putting the right stuff in those buildings. So we have to be very careful when we are spending somebody else's dollars too, that we don't go so damn cheap that within 20 years, we got shit there and then what are we going to do?
So if the issue is the structure enclosing things is steel or the structure closing things is cement.
It doesn't make a difference.
And all the rest of that, a steel building is not a cheap method. It may be less expensive, but it ain't cheap. That's going to look like that, but it's little little maintenance all the way around. So we're not talking about.
How long is, how long has that ice rink been over there?
Twenty-five years, 26 years.
Okay, we're putting a new roof on there. Stuff wears out. You have to redo things. It's Minnesota, you know? And sure, like I said, I'm not here arguing that we have to go with a concrete or a steel or whatever. We want to make sure what project is going to go back to the voters is going to be. That I can say that, you know what, I was proud of being part of this year. So 30 years from now, that if somebody does come back to me and says, what the heck were you guys thinking on the board?
And I think the other piece of, sorry, Cheryl, I'll be right to you, okay? I think the other thing too is I don't want anybody to think that what is currently being proposed is in any way the Lamborghini or anything that's out there.
No.
It is not. It is what I would consider a very quality structure that is really planned to last a long time. But it is.
But it is what I would call very much middle of the road. There are not frivolous extravagant aspects to it. It is very much, this is what the space is designed to be used for. And so that is what we are going to include in it. There is not, you know, the grand entryways and all the glass paneling and highlighting this access point or this architectural feature with natural sunlight. That, that's not what's going on in the design of this, this project. Go ahead, Cheryl.
I think, I'm kinda with Bruce. We just don't have the numbers. What is it gonna cost steel or steel type versus concrete? And, and what is the longevity of both? And what is the upkeep of both?
Yeah, but we're getting all that stuff.
But if we can't compare those two, we're not making a decision on what we're going to do. We're making a yes or no decision on the whole project.
Right.
But I would like to have some more information too on some of the particulars.
Well, I don't get that. Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think anyone is making a yes or no decision on any particulars. I mean, let's go back to this outline. Again, where, where this, where MBE will tell you, "You should go out and ask for your bond referendum" is in the preliminary planning components between A2 and A3. That's where you should go do that. And right now, what I see is that we have a construction estimate. That is ideally, if you wanna say it's the, the most high-end building that we would put up, it probably is. And so we have a construction estimate for that. But that doesn't mean that the final planning, that there could be some things to be able to modify whatever that, that construction number is.
So when do we decide when that final number is the number we're going to go for?
Well, that's ultimately what needs to end up happening here in the finalizing of this preliminary planning. So there's a couple ways districts have gone about it. A couple of them, or I shouldn't say a couple, but several districts will go and choose to do a formal survey tool. I've inquired with a couple of firms that do those things. And both of them are not turning us away as clients. But both of them have also said, "Matt, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Typically, districts with your enrollment and your size as far as community residents, typically they aren't using our services because of our cost." I mean, typically a district, if they're going to hire a Bill Morris who was at the C meeting and stuff, I mean, you're looking at a $15,000 to $20,000 expense for them to come out and have this firm and do a survey to really try and figure out exactly what the community would spend. The other, the flip side to it is, surveying is not an exact science. You know, I have a good friend who works in Buffalo and over Moncho schools. They had a surveying company come out and, and they had, this is the dollar amount that your community will support for an operating front runner. You know what the vote was? 30% in favor, 70% opposed. The surveying company was just wrong. So I don't necessarily know. Is it good, a good use of resources for us to go and engage and do that? I don't know. I think, I'll be honest with you. What was taking place prior to July 1, as far as getting community input, stakeholder input, and really developing kind of what the priorities and needs are, I think there was good work in that. And I honestly, I can look people in the eye and have conversations about this facility plan because I can tell them, this is what meets the priorities. These are the needs that have been identified and this is what meets the needs. And I think if that's the plan, the needs aren't gonna change. If somehow we decide that, you know what? 17 million is not gonna work. It has to be 12. There's still needs that are gonna be unmet. And the next board that's sitting here, they're gonna sit down and they're gonna figure out, "How are we gonna get these needs taken care of?" Because they are not going away. To get to your point as far as a steel building, I, I think, yes, absolutely. There, there could be a way to, to have a steel component of that, that fieldhouse. Yes, you could, I think you could do a variety of things with that. I don't think that that steel building does anything for remodeling our CTE wing. That, that...
Maybe. That's a maybe. We don't know that. We need to get the company that builds steel buildings. Evan doesn't build steel buildings. Evan builds buildings like this. So if we look at what we're doing in education, we're trying to set up an educational system in the whole school that is out of the box, thinking about different things. Well, out of the box thinking, maybe not to build, just like we have built for years other than having a concrete panel instead of brick, let's look and see what the options are. They may not be valid. But there are companies that build steel buildings that know how to do that. They know how to connect. They know how to do all that. The part coming out of the back of those places could be steel. It doesn't necessarily need to be. Firm School, and I don't know if anybody saw the shirt, but Firm School, the front side is brick. A lot of the backside is a steel building. And if you see the inside pictures of their shop, area where they have the stuff, it is a steel building. It looks a lot like what we have in Industrial Park. Now, it's a steel building style than a pole barn style. Many of our buildings are smaller. It may be an option. Maybe we're dead wrong on that. And maybe, maybe that's not there. But I think we have a due diligence part of making sure we're doing the right thing. So we get the needs and all that. I don't disagree with that at all. I agree with that. We gotta have some for the kids. But at the end of the day, if we go through the process and the public says, "No," that's a whole different thing because we give them one choice.
But we, well, we're gonna give them one choice. Well, we have to give them one choice. We get it. We'll give them one choice.
But we're just one choice.
No.
We're just gonna give them one choice. Because when we decide if it's $17 million we asked the voters for, it is gonna cost $17 million.
Also, Bruce, we have to get to a point, like I said, we have, we have spent hours and hours and hours developing this project of what we're, what we're thinking. I feel like we're just hung up on, is it gonna be steel or is it gonna be precast?
I'm not there. I'm hung up on making sure that when we go to the voters, we go with them a dollar that will be hopefully acceptable to them, that we've done due diligence, that we've shopped, just like it was our own money and we were building our own house, to find out if we have the process that we need to take place. If we're talking about the needs of the kids, that's internal. Okay? We're talking about shelf here.
I, I, I don't, I don't think you can delineate those two. I don't think you can say that the needs of students and the needs of kids, that's just an internal expense that go and figure out possibilities D through J and, and figure out which one works. If those two are tied, they're interconnected. And the other thing that I think this community has been really clear about is, are we using all of our existing space? I think that is, that is a paramount question that I'll, I'll be frank with everybody. That was the one that I'm most nervous about.
But we are addressing them.
We are addressing it. But I think that's why it's critically important to be able to take what our existing CTE space is and be able to do that remodel and repurpose and be able to have a space that we currently have an existing footprint and utilize that in a, a structure and in a CTE method vision where we're going that is updated, that can accommodate the equipment of today and, and continue to move forward with hopefully, you know, meeting what, what we're trying to do for the next 15, 20 years. We have to repurpose that space. I, I just don't think it's a possibility to say that, no, we're gonna, you know, ignore whatever existing space we have and we're gonna, you know, go this way or that way. I think it's critical that we repurpose that space and we use every square foot in this building to its fullest capacity.
Do we have, do we know anybody that puts up big steel structures that could entertain a question what that would cost?
Certainly, there, there are people out there.
And then there's the whole, because it's a school, there's certain stipulations, certain rules, certain...
Right, and they would, they would need, they would know that, right?
Right, and that's the other thing is, and this whole guidebook of MDE, that's one thing that the 148 pages does too, is it is very technical about what it is that you need to go through to construct a school. So, I mean, by all means, it's in the December drive. Check it out. It is something that you can certainly take a peek at. But yeah, there, there is that, that component to it.
So do we need to have somebody come in and just look at the plan that we looked at and say, "What parts of this year could be steel and what would it cost?"
Absolutely. That's what I'm hearing at the table tonight. But that's something that is, is gonna happen tomorrow that I'm going to give movement on.
The, the problem I see is that the quote that we got did not delineate, you know, this was specifically for the outside walls. Can we get that from Evan?
He did.
Was that broken out?
Yeah, he had what it was for the walls, what it was for the roof, what it was for a whole bunch of things and all that.
But are we talking about specifically the outside walls or was he talking about some other wall? I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that what he's specifically saying with the walls here, talking about...
And I don't get it terribly defined. But we asked him about structure.
And superstructure.
Superstructure, what was that? And then he had it kinda all broken out.
Because that superstructure would be what that steel building would be, right?
Superstructure would be the, the metal framework.
Yeah, but that's with the steel.
But then he had another cost. Evan had another cost for furnishing it.
Right.
Okay? And then he had another cost for the roof. And...
Yeah, but we, we could if he, if we can get somebody here that works with schools and putting up fieldhouses and, and put stuff together and see once what that would cost. And then we can kinda look at what that cost is versus what the precast would be. And then we can have that discussion of, you know, which direction and how much more is that we're gonna save or not save. Does that sound okay?
That sounds great.
Just so we have something. Because I have no issue going to the public for the vote. I have no doubt that I can see why we wanted to do this. Makes sense to me. I just think we need to do a really good due diligence here, not just hitting that one road. And just locally, I have no idea exactly what Boss Plumbing, right in our own town does. But those guys, we all see around here as a small plumbing company. Their business is everywhere, building commercial buildings. The amount of cement they've laid, the amount of different things they've done, they might be a good lead to find out some way that could put us on a steel building. They're right here.
We would, we would have to get somebody that does schools or that's or universities or something because they have to follow those rules that, that...
They all know what it is. They'll all end up...
They don't all know what it is.
They'll all end up with an architect.
Right, so...
And it's all according to building codes. So there's more to it. Building is the building code.
But once you get into the federal government and state legislation with schools and hospitals, that's a whole different animal. And a lot of those guys don't even wanna touch it because it is such an animal. And it has to go through MDE to get certified.
And, and there is a, there is a little bit of a, a little bit of a niche market. That yes, there are some people out there that are heavily invested in the school construction and that's what they do. And then there are some others that, if it's a school-related stuff, they, they're interested in. So there are, there are differences.
Well, we, I think we kinda have a direction that we need to get, just get that there done and then we have something to...
Sure. So can we move on here as far as, I wanna keep talking as far as, you know, what is the board's feeling as far as whose decision as far as moving a potential project? Obviously, when I was, was first looking into this, my gut was telling me that it would be this board is the one that would make that decision, you know? And I made that decision based on the fact that this board is the one who has been working on this now for close to two years. And I think that that is kind of where I started. I received some pushback on, you know, really asking the question, are you sure that's the direction you want to go? Does it make sense if there's going to be four new board members in January? Does it make sense for them to, uh, to make sure that those four are on board? And, um, they're the ones that are going to be really responsible for communicating the plan and getting the priorities and needs and vision out to people? Is it important for them to make that decision? I go back and forth on that. I can see credence in both arguments. So I guess I'm wondering from board members, what, is there a compelling thought one way or the other on this?
In my opinion, we all put a ton of work in on this thing. There is nobody here, we all tried to attend all the meetings and we did all that, but if you could call us in a lame duck session at the moment, okay? And we have four new board members coming in. If it was a couple of board members, it makes a little difference. So a majority of the board is coming in. And I think it behooves those people to be totally in on this thing. Because that's the group that has to sell it. The other group are gonna get all the questions. Once four board members leave, they may get some questions, but the questions are gonna go to the people that are on the board and they have to be in there. And honestly, if we can't make all seven of the new board members believe this is the thing to go forward, we better reformulate, right? It may be just a sample of what is in the community. That's what I said. And I was first on the first side, but the more I thought about it, it doesn't take many people to be on the other fence against the project to eliminate it. Okay, and I think that all seven of the new board need to be in on it. That's just my personal opinion.
Then I'm with Bruce on that. I think the people are with Bruce on that. I think the people are gonna carry it forward are the boardists that have elected for 2019 forward.
And you think if you wait until the future board makes a decision? Us as a board right now have spent a lot of time and energy, invested a lot of, a lot of it into the project. We're not just gonna walk away and say, okay, good luck. I mean, we've invested the time and we're gonna continue to, you know, invest in whatever project is brought forward.
Well, I, I look, you know, if we say, if we were voted down, it's okay, it's seven oh, go forward. Then we have a new board in. And then some of them, like, you know, I don't know. But most of them have been at the meetings, have been involved and I'm really hopeful. But, um, if you had a board member that said no against it, that's, 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 it would be hard.
I would hope that they'd go in board, you mean?
Or the new board?
The new board. Yeah, one of them says that they don't want to go with it?
Yeah.
Would then it would be hard to go through with it?
Well, if you won. It's one of, I, I think, it's one of those projects where in the end it's the majority of board that have to give it up before, I mean, because you're gonna put a lot of time and effort into it. I hate to say it, but it's, you know, there's gonna be meetings we're gonna have to go to, we're gonna have to go public meetings, we're gonna have to go out there and sell it.
But I think that is being sold right now. You can't tell me that there's not any board members or anybody else that right now talking about this year on the public. We have, how many people come here? Hundred and fifty people, which then we have spoused, that's three hundred people probably that was when this first started two years ago. There's a lot of people that have been on those twiddies off and on that really have a lot of stake in it for the last two years.
And that's all positive, that's all good.
Yeah.
But I don't say that hundred and fifty that came here and now before the project will be the one.
I would say a large percentage.
A large percent, I, but I think there's just, I hope we don't go into thinking, oh, this is gonna pass, we're gonna be...
No, no, I don't think so either. Well, I don't think, you know, like I, I'm a familiar, it should be this year board. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get to that point just because we have some underlying issues that are going on right now, but I still think that this board should be the one that is gonna decide. We're not going to, we're not gonna be leaving this, this community. We have not been voted off of this board in this last election. We got off of this board because it was, for whatever reasons, we got off of it. We're still gonna be behind the scenes, we're still gonna be talking to people in our influencing areas that, you know, this is a great project. So I can't see that, that, that it's not. It's now you're putting bonus on four brand-new board members that probably was only in the last few months have been on this, this band break. And now you're gonna ask them to support a fifteen million dollar project and you're gonna have to go and sell it? Yeah, we're gonna have to, but, but again, that's why, I think for me it would be, you put all this effort in it and now you go sit in the corner and whatever happens, happens. That's not gonna happen. We're not gonna, we're not gonna just sit there and let this year just go, even though we're not on the board. I mean, we have a lot invested, we have a lot of partners who are in this, our kids are getting in this community for two years. So if we're sitting here supporting them, we're gonna continue supporting them. So I still think that it's our, this is the board that makes the decision because we are the ones that downed through the trenches. We went through hell and back on a lot of meetings over the years and I think this is the board that should make that decision. But if we can get the information to us before we are done.
Sure.
I think it'd be great for this board to make the decision because we have put so much time into it. But this is a very large project. And if I have to rush to a decision because I have to make a decision by a certain date or else, I don't know if I can stand behind that. I need to be assured that this is what we want. And if we can get the information and we come to the decision, I mean, if it works out, if that's what we want, I'm all in. But I don't want to feel rushed to do something when the project is big.
And I don't think anybody's rushing this. We've been here for two years, we're not rushing it. We all know what's out there, we all know what the stakes are, we all know what the money is are. We all know we're gonna pay more taxes we do this year. So we can't keep ourselves out of that. So, but again, I do have some reservations because we do want to look at the steel building project to see once if that would be viable or not and if we can do it to that point or not. But I don't think rush, that shouldn't be any word that's from any one of our moms right now because we've been in the trenches for the last two, three and a half years. We're not being rushed, we're actually dragging our feet probably. Because we don't want to make a decision. We're scared of the ultimate decision because it's a lot of money. A lot of people are gonna be looking at you. And you know, at the end of the day, that, that project isn't to what it's gonna be held up to be and it's going to not last as long, guess who's gonna be the one that's gonna be pointing your finger at? The board that made that decision. So anyhow, I think we've...
Can I ask one more question then? And I guess I would just also like to feel to get the conversation started potentially looking at the board hiring an owner's representative. So an owner's representative, um, is really, it's a company like that ICS and Salte or Unesco. They do a variety of, of things, but one of them that they, that they're responsible for is acting as an owner's rep. And they actually employ the engineers, the architects and everyone that's all over their house. And the biggest thing that owner's reps will take out of the equation is contingencies. Because it's their agreement that the board will be signing them on as their owner's rep. If there's a change order or something along those lines, it's actually the owner's project's responsibility.
What do you have to add?
Yeah, so an owner's rep, so for instance, if, if we're gonna run this as the district is going to go and interview, um, general contractors. And we're gonna maybe have five contractors come in and they'll give us their sales pitch and part of their sales pitch is gonna be, and this is the percentage of the project that we hold as contingency. Well, they hold it as contingency largely for change orders. Because something was missing in the planning or something didn't quite happen and now all of a sudden it's a bigger bill than what was intended. Well, they don't want to have to just eat that as part of their, their cost. They're building in a contingency so they have a pool of money available. Owner's reps actually employ the engineers, the architects and everyone that is going through the planning phases. And they assume the responsibility for any of the data, information or planning that those different contingencies would provide. So then when you have an owner's rep and there's a, um, an issue with the mechanical engineering schematics for the HVAC system and whoops, we, you know, forgot that we need this commensorium or something and there's a change order, rather than having to come out of contingency, that's the owner's rep's responsibility because they're the ones that are actually involved in these things. Now, owner's reps, it's a contract. And so there is a percentage of the project is what owner's reps, um, that's how their contracts work. Typically, it's their contract, less a percentage, then a smaller percentage than most of the contingencies go into, um, projects, yeah, it typically is. And they're taking on the responsibility. I have worked with owner's reps in the past, um, my experience with them has been great. Number one, I can tell you if this district is going to move forward with a significant project, we don't have the administrative overhead to dedicate somebody to be the oversight of our general contractor. Donnie doesn't have time in his day to simply just go walk around the general contractor making sure they're doing what they want to do. The owner's rep would step in and they would be our representative that would be handling this stuff. So I would at least like to engage a couple of these outfits and have a conversation with them, share some plans, share some ideas. Uh, the other thing that they can do is they're, you know, a couple of these outfits, they've put up, you know, um, over a billion dollars or so of, of school buildings in the last six or seven years. And so they actually can probably take our existing construction estimate and our existing plan and be able to go and do some work on theirs and give us a second payment as far as what they think, um, that, that amount would go forward. Uh, the owner's reps that I've worked with in the past, um, their services are of no charge up until you have a dedicated project that you are hiring in. At that point then, um, there's a contract that we have to check and we can, we can, uh, cost that.
So last time we met with Ari Martins, who we've got involved with here, Carl Anderson's here, a couple of others are here. Carl Anderson, I think, is a contractor.
So is Ari.
Is Ari Martin their contractor also? Because a lot of his presentation was talking about what you just did. Mark, can you tell me when we built the auditorium, you hired somebody?
I was not, I was not. Donnie probably was.
I understood, now I was not watching the very close inspection manager do that. Somebody do that, oversaw that.
DLR Construction Manager.
Who?
DLR Construction Management.
They oversaw it? Okay, does that sound like one of the owner's efforts?
I think it's different.
So, so a construction manager is going to take, and they're gonna go into this idea of implementation of the construction project. Your construction manager's gonna run pretty good your contract procurement awards and then oversee your construction days. An owner's rep is actually going to get involved in this. They can actually start at A with the needs assessment. That's how we've been down here, but that's how we would need someone to do again. But they can actually get started at whatever level we would like them to. And then, um, they, in addition to the initial prep of the pre-planning stuff, they would continue to run the pre, the, the contract procurement and awarding contracts and all of those things. So typically those construction managers, yeah, they're gonna come around and once a project is done and you're ready to actually get the shovels in the ground, that's when a district may hire a construction manager.
But with this guy, or this owner representative, do we need to do that then?
No, you don't.
So we've eliminated potentially that part of the potential cost. Because when I talk to some other schools about it, the issue is wiping out all your time trying to build a building which isn't your expertise.
Yeah.
And we have to be very cautious of what, what you're doing there so it doesn't just swallow up a bit of super genocide. Because school districts do that. It's not uncommon, right? That would concern these guys.
So I would like to have the conversation with a couple of these outfits and see what they, they have to say. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's some interest to explore it. Certainly doesn't sound like there's some apprehension or to put the brakes on it.
I absolutely think you should do that. That's what I'm talking about, due diligence. We need to figure out the best way to make this all flow smoothly.
And the other thing, and I looked into this a little bit at our last facility meeting, the other thing that, um, these owner reps are going to do. Owner reps are also first in Minnesota's school compliance. Their itch is the education for non-owners in Minnesota. And I alluded to it a little bit. So for instance, the remodeling phase of that construction estimate, there are different funding mechanisms that we can access to do that. There are also people from these owner reps that actually will be able to take that entire construction estimate and our entire plan. And they would actually be able to lay out a smorgasbord of funding tools to say, this is how you could actually do the entire project. Maybe of your seventeen million, maybe this twelve million, you're gonna go and do a bond referendum for it. Maybe this million, you're going to borrow against your LTFM dollars. Maybe you're gonna borrow forty percent of your LTFM dollars to get this million dollars upfront. You know, um, there's maybe some other pockets of money that have ADA and some other compliance statutes in there that we can offer, that we can access some of it funding through, through those type of things. And they can actually provide a, a comprehensive plan as to this is what the total cost for doing these are, all of your funding tools that are at the table. And then they can run through some scenarios with the board to say, if you wanted to just analyze it from a tax impact perspective, utilizing these four funding mechanisms in this order, that's the best way to maximize your best, or leverage your best accident. If you want to look at it from what frees up the most district general fund dollars, they could rearrange in a different way to be able to have a, um, a look at the question. So I think there's a, you know, what they bring to the table. I'm gonna talk with a couple of women, see what, uh, what they have to say.
So we got some projects going on. Alvin has just finished a project, we got Cole Spring, we got Aldi's going, yeah, and the lemon. So those people using the owner representative, you know?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure what Alvin did.
Yeah, the real deal is, because maybe we find out they did it and if it was successful for them, that's a, that's a good indicator that maybe we should be serious about it. Sounds good to me, but I think that's part of our due diligence for the public.
Sure.
Is to make sure we follow the, and look at all the options.
I think that's where we have additional questions.
I have one additional comment since I seem that I need to talk to Wes. One thing I found when I was looking through some of that list that you sent down there, I mean, ones that went through that, as I went into the website, I found websites that didn't work or anything like that. But what I found is that a bunch of them that passed had actually brochures very clear about what the project was. And so when I looked at those, commonly you could find that that was part of, I think, in my estimation, their success. We sometimes think we're all on computers. Half of our population is probably over fifty, fifty-nine years old. Yep, they might be on computers all the time. I don't necessarily know that for sure, but it was a pamphlet that they handed out. They talked to one of the schools today and they handed it out at twelve or fifteen different meetings to everybody that showed up in multiple. So they would take it home to people that couldn't attend, pass it out. And I think, we were hoping for that last time, I don't mean to be too blunt here, but last time I thought we were gonna get one of them because Carl Anderson showed up here and they talked about giving us a brochure. We never actually went to the public with a brochure at the last one. Not anything that was kind of clear or something that anybody could even understand. But I think in this whole process, we need to keep that part in and it's all about giving all the information to the public exactly how we got here, this is what we're looking at, this is what we want to do. And then eliminating all the costs you have to, when it's a brochure, nobody can.
Yeah, and, and I think you're getting the cart a little in front of the horse here now when you start talking about, um, what the PR is campaign and how we're going to educate our voters and all of that stuff. That's all part of the conversation yet to come. If we can get to the point where we feel like we have a seven-member board that's willing to perform with the project, that is certainly something that needs to be out there. But I would agree wholeheartedly, I think that whole education piece needs to be a multifaceted, comprehensive plan. It cannot simply be, we're gonna schedule information meetings up at our school building and expect people to just walk in because they want to be an educated voter. No, we've gotta go find them. If that means we're meeting with three people for lunch, that means we meet with three people. If it means we can go and get in front of fifty people, we get in front of fifty people. But it's gotta be a comprehensive plan. And how we can come up with that? The fabulous thing about it is, I think I have a list right now that's pushing about twenty community members that have contacted me in one form or fashion or one way or another that says, I will help, um, I will help get this thing going and I would help if there's a yes, a yes committee. So there is definitely people out there that want to, to take on that task. And the question then becomes, how do we utilize all of our resources to really get, um, a machine going to get that message? Doesn't matter what area, Angel area schools you're in, you've just gotta be able to stumble across it. It's gotta be everyone. Okay? All right, so we have to do J. Uh, no, excuse me, we can do I first, I'm sorry. Uh, yep, so the community facility meeting will be December seventeenth. The question that I guess I have is, um, do we want this board to have one last special meeting to consider that facility project on December twenty-seventh at six P.M.? Uh, the nice thing about scheduling that now, we could always certainly cancel that if we don't have the information available. If we get a schedule now, then schedule it. If that information is out here, we can certainly come together and this board can have one last, um, conversation about that facility project. Or do we not know enough right now and we can just remove that, um, from the scheduling of our community?
I kind of like the idea of planning it, but I can see the negative side of that. The negative side is if we cancel it, will somebody that could be against the project say, well, they couldn't even figure it out if they cancel their meeting? No, I think even though I like the idea, I would tend to do it after the meeting of, of the facilities. That's what I would do. I would come together, I mean, we all need, you know, leave a ton of days to announce a meeting and we're coming together on the seventeenth.
And you'll have a regular business meeting on the eighteenth. So you should schedule...
Yeah, I think we should really consider it.
Okay.
At that time, but I...
So we're gonna delete it off of this list. Okay? Okay? You got that, Linda?
Yep.
And then we'll just do the upcoming meetings will be December seventeenth and January seventh. December seventh. December seventeenth is the facility one. December eighteenth is already scheduled, that's a regular business meeting. And then January seventh. Okay? Then we have to go to J and we'll be out there. World Best Workforce.
Yes.
Um, World Best Workforce meeting met on November fourteenth and, uh, John Canoke had walked through our, our goal. So essentially, there are five, uh, state goals that are associated with World Best Workforce. The first one has to do with having students ready for kindergarten. And, um, our, our goal was to have eighty-three percent or higher for our kindergarten roundup of students ready for, uh, for K. And at seventeen eighteen, we had, um, screened just over eighty-eight percent. And so we were on track and that goal was, was being met. The second goal has to do with all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy. So the, the goal there was for third grade proficiency scores on NCA reading to increase to seventy-five percent, or excuse me, up to seventy-seven percent in seventeen eighteen. And our seventeen eighteen proficiency rate was sixty-point-three percent. So that goal was not met. The third goal is to close achievement gap between student groups. This again is a goal that we were, did not meet. Our biggest achievement gap in this district along with several of the other districts in the area is either our students that are receiving pre-reduced benefits or not, or our special education students that are receiving services or not. Those are our two largest, uh, achievement gaps. This is also what our achievement integration, our goal is focusing on and we did not meet our goal on that as well. We're not alone in that. This is something that is a statewide, um, issue as the state is in the process of reevaluating the whole achievement integration program. Quite simply, I think with their intention and what their thought as far as leveraging resources to, you know, close some of those achievement gaps. resources to, you know, close some of those achievement gaps, statewide, that's something that schools are struggling with. The fourth one was all students would be career in college ready by graduation, and this is a goal that we have met. There's a variety of pieces in here as far as how students are achieving that, but most of that is grounded in NCRA and ACT scores, so that is something that we are on base and on track for. Then the fifth one is all students will graduate, and we're going, a little torn on this whole deal, our baseline graduation rate was 98.3%, which I understand is not 100%, but our baseline was 98.3, and last year our graduation rate was 97.3, so it did decrease by a percent. So according to the city's definition, that that room did not meet that goal. Now, mind you...
We only have a small grant week left.
That's exactly one of the components that we did talk about when we're submitting our paperwork. But do my, please be mindful that statewide, in all student groups, the four-year graduation rate in the state of Minnesota is just over just above 80%. So in the grand scheme of things, when we're sitting there with a 97% graduation rate, I think that means we're experiencing some success. Does that minimize that it's okay for some of our students not to graduate now? It is, we want to strive to have 100% of students graduate, and that's what we're proposing for most, because there's going to be a tight... So those are the five goal areas. We did meet on November 14th and reviewed this. It'd be my recommendation to approve it, and this can all, and will, as to...
I'm going to approve the approval report.
So I have a motion from blue, it's in a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Are you not all favoring, signify by aye? If we hold the same sign, we carry. Blue?
We'll adjourn.
Blue? Any other further discussions? Are you not all favoring, signify by aye? If we hold the same sign...